I'd like to invite you to stand with me for the invocation given by Commissioner Strickland, followed by the pledge by Commissioner Browning.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heaven and father, we thank thee for this community, all that live and work here. As I said, blessings upon those that protect us both here and overseas, for the freedoms that we hold so dearly. All of these things we ask in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Public comment period. We have three speakers tonight, and our first speaker is Mr. Hugh Bork. If you would come to the podium, state your full name, address, and telephone number for the record, and you have five minutes.
My name is Hugh Bork. I live in Seapalms on St. Simon's Island, and I'll give my phone number to the clerk after the proceedings. Gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. However, I just want to convey you, on the behalf of the citizens on the island, that some of our officials, at all levels, are not listening to us or don't care about the island. I'm delivering that message. As human nature is such, the perception is a reality to the receiver until some action is taken to clear that perception. However, I do want to grant and acknowledge that the action on the agenda tonight for the plan is a step in the right direction, but again, jury's still out on that. I emailed each of you, as well as the Island Planning Commissioners members last week. In that email, I cited some specific examples that the IPC had taken in recent meetings, as well as conversations with my peers in the community after that meeting. And in summary, we've asked to review the IPC apparently has approved noncompliant applications, as outlined in my email, and more importantly, the citizens are outraged that the IPC actions have shut down public comment. I'll offer the following discussion supporting that position and observation. I'd like to also ask for five specific actions by members of the commission. Provide the IPC with the tools necessary to do their job. They're doing a yeoman's job and probably ought to get combat pay for what they're asked to do in the environment they're working in today, so thanks a lot for that. Get rid of the minimum mentality requirement for the IPC activities. Make the right decision, not the minimum requirement decision. Actively solicit public comment in a democratic process. Include in the zoning ordinance preamble requirements as part of the checklist for applications, okay? And I'll talk a little bit about some improvements for the tree ordinance as a closing item. To underscore those comments, the comprehensive plan, one of the key elements that the IPC is supposed to consider is the consistency of the given application with the comprehensive plan. Therefore, there ought to be a plan in place. This needs to be fixed immediately. Looks like we have some steps in place that may get us there. The plan on the agenda tonight, however, should include the implementation timeline and rollout. This is an absolute must for the success of any plan, and is conspicuously missing from the draft applicant that's due for consideration tonight. Traffic study, a key element of the planning operation. We're using an outdated plan with numerous deficiencies and shortcomings. Those have been pointed out as late as August of 2016 to members of this body and to the Island Planning Commission. Things like the long-range projections only talk about 1% growth. We know that's not a valid number nowadays. It's far exceeding that, yet the traffic planning is based on 1% growth. Anybody that drives on the islands today, at any time during the day, but particularly at the noon hour and the morning-evening rush hour, it's clear that the inputs into the studies and whatever are sorely deficient. What you see on the traffic in the roads today is not represented by what's brought forth in the plan, and the little bit I've seen of DOT compliant computations that are used to support that are generally compliant for the county, but certainly don't apply to the island traffic conditions. There are a lot of other deficiencies I don't have time, doesn't allow, but it is in the communications that were sent in August. A couple of them were highlighted in my email to you folks earlier last week. One item that really concerns me is clear responsibility between the Joint Water Sewer Commission and the IPC. Right now, the actions are both pointing at each other, and the IPC is granting petitions or applications based on provisional promises from the Joint Water Sewer Commission, okay? Provisional promises are not compliant with what the ordinance requires. It does put us in a compromising position because nobody has taken responsibility. As I said, both organizations are doing this in the meetings, right, or in the communications. But most importantly, if you'll read the promissory note from the Joint Water Sewer Commission that the IPC is using, and I'm paraphrasing here for the interest of time, but it says, "Provided that capacity is in place," this is speaking of sewage capacity, "provided that capacity is in place, and no detrimental impact to the downstream facilities is noted at the time the connection is made." Gentlemen, that's a huge risk, both in DNR and regulatory space, as well as litigation space, if you can appreciate that. We tend to fall back on the first part of that statement and ignore the second part. Also, regarding the tools, the staffing for the staff of the Planning Commission, supporting the Planning Commission, I think most people will know is woefully inadequate, yet we're still asking them to perform at the fully-staffed conditions. And I also ask the question, is that enough considering the workload we've got coming forward with us? And it's way too late when we fill the positions and then come to know that, wow, that's not enough yet for the workload coming. So I raise that as a concern. Even if we fill the positions, is that going to get us where we need to be? My opinion, in a number of years of business, it's probably not.
Your time's up, Mr. Bork. It's five minutes is up. Thank you, sir. Mr. Jim Foster's our second speaker.
Thank you. My name is Jim Foster, and I live on East Beach on St. Simon's Island, where I've had a home since 1997. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My topic is your proposed strategic plan, which is on the agenda for your approval tonight. First, I would like to congratulate the board for stepping up to this task, and thank Dr. Hepburn and your staff members for creating an excellent document. Let me say, by way of background, my interest in this plan reflects my business career, where I was the chief financial officer and head of strategic planning for five companies, both private and public, ranging in revenue size from $250 million to over $15 billion. Successful strategic planning was my life's passion. I attended the strategic planning session on February 23, and I've read the documents from the first session on September 29. While I applaud the planned document that you have before you, and I support its adoption tonight, I do have some observations and considerations that I would ask you to look at as you go through the planning process. I've summarized my thoughts into four bullet point takeaways. Number one, the plan for implementation of the strategic plan should be concluded as part of the strategic plan itself. An implementation plan was not listed as an element of the strategic plan components outlined at the September meeting. Some aspects of the implementation are scattered in the current plan. I am suggesting this plan, this implementation plan, needs to be a formal document. My experience and most studies conclude that a major reason for the failure of a strategic plan is poor, incomplete, understaffed, and under-financed policies, procedures, time paths, due dates, and lack of assigned responsibilities. Having a detailed implementation plan is as important as the plan itself that is before you tonight. Therefore, I urge you to develop that plan and place it as a part of the document you have before you. I am not suggesting that the plan tonight should not be passed. I am saying that I would ask and urge you to put a placeholder in that plan for the implementation plan that Mr. Hours and staff will be developing over the course of time. If you approve that plan, you're going to be taking responsibility for filling a vision statement, a mission statement, five core beliefs, six strategic goals, 45 objectives, and the measurements of over 45 key performance indicators. Doing all of this while simultaneously creating a new comprehensive plan, a new budget, and overseeing your normal fiduciary responsibilities is a significant amount of work. A well-designed implementation plan will significantly increase the odds of the strategic plan being a success. Bullet point two, objectives and key performance measurements should be made in a comparative format and have impact statements. I mean by this, KPIs should not only indicate the progress that Glen County is making, but also how is it performing relative to other counties in Georgia? How is it performing to the state and national norms? And most importantly, how is it performing to best-in-class performers? Both the objectives and the KPIs also need to be accompanied by impact statements, which indicate that if we are hitting these KPIs and achieving these objectives, what will the impact on the county and its citizens be? Knowing the social and financial impacts will be essential to your prioritizing scarce human and financial resources of the county. Bullet point three, achieving the strategic goal of becoming a financially responsible government is a bedrock essential element for not only the strategic plan, but also for you and your fulfillment of your fiduciary responsibilities. Among the nine objectives under this strategic goal is an analysis of revenue sources by a revenue study committee. I would suggest another committee be added, a separate committee, an expense and organizational study committee as a companion. I believe this review of Glen County's structure against other counties, against national and state norms, and especially against best-in-class performers would yield expense reductions or reallocations and process improvements. In the same vein, having an objective of having an internal audit department is mandatory. Recent events in this county indicate the need and the value for such a control. But in addition to its control function, a good department can find expense savings and organizational efficiencies. Finally, I would note that one of the implications of increased measurements due to both the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan is the need for a fully-staffed finance function, operating on a higher-grade accounting platform with more robust report-writing tools. Point four.
Mr. Foster, I'm sorry, your time is up. Your five minutes is up. If you could send those by email to us, that would be wonderful.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, it's part of the procedure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Third and final speaker, Mr. George Rexdale.
Good evening, George Rexdale. I live on St. Simon's. Unaccustomed as I am to standing in front of you and speaking in favor of something, that is why I'm here tonight. I want to speak in favor of the item on the agenda for the moratorium specifically, and I want to talk about the reasons why I think a moratorium is the right thing to do at this point in time. First, with respect to the Community Development Department and their staffing. As others have said before me, and I'm sure it'll be discussed more tonight, the Planning Department currently is understaffed. There's been two planning positions open for most, almost a year. The Planning Director's position was approved by you guys at a work session last August and is yet to be filled. We have a consultant that's working with the department that, as I understand it from reading some of the minutes of your meetings, has been approved to spend up to $55,000 for a very part-time job at this point. The Community Development Department is significantly overloaded, to the point where they don't even have the time to go out and visit the sites for the applications that are being put in front of them. At the last Island Planning Commission on the 21st of February, a perfect example of that was the Sinclair development, where they didn't, were not aware of the fact that there was a cemetery on the property, there was an historical marker on the property. So they don't even have time to be able to do those things, and they're making material errors in reviewing the applications. Again, focusing on the Sinclair property, not the least of which is that half the property that was presented was sold in December and is covered by a conservation easement, and that was not noted during the meeting. The other part of it is that their workload is growing. As you heard from the two previous speakers, with the comprehensive plan that is going to be initiated next month, with the strategic plan that you're going to be voting on tonight, both of those require not only a lot of resources, but should be led by the Community Development Department. Do they have the resources to be able to do that in addition to managing the day-to-day items that come before them? I would argue that they do not, even if they're fully staffed. But again, the workload is growing. The other thing is that as a planning department, the planning is supposed to be a proactive function, not a reactive function. Everything that the Planning Department has done, the Community Development Department has done since I've been here, has been totally reactive. If I look at the mission statement for the Planning Community Development Department that's on the county's website, it says the Community Development Department, and I'm quoting, "is responsible for managing the physical growth development and redevelopment of Glen County, along with the coordination of infrastructure improvements to support development." They are not managing the physical growth. They are reacting to what's put in front of them, and that's not the role of the Planning Department. So, at the end of the day, there really are three things that I would ask. One is that the moratorium be approved, but for three specific reasons. One, that it be approved until the Community Development Department is fully-staffed, and those people are up to speed and able to function in the roles that they're supposed to be filling. Second, that the Island Planning Commission procedures be clarified, and it be clear that the community needs to be more involved in that process. And third, that the scope and timing of both the comprehensive plan and the strategic plan are clearly defined, and the resource requirements are defined and in place. Without those, we're going to keep spinning our wheels. I would note, for the sake of argument, there is no downside for the county in this moratorium. The moratorium, contrary to what's been said in some of the public discussions, is it does not impact building permits. It doesn't stop construction. It applies, unless it's changed, it would apply to zoning approvals, conditional use permits, special use permits, site plans, and preliminary plaits. It would not affect any of the ongoing work. It is a temporary moratorium until some certain things have been accomplished. With all due respect to all of the commissioners, you have to attend an Island Planning Commission meeting to see how bad it really is. Commissioner Stanball, you represent the island. I've never seen you at an Island Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Coleman attends all of them. Commissioner Murphy attends them. You need to come and see what that's like to really get a sense of the problems that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rex. Public hearing items, abandonment. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to represent your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. AB 3236, consider the application for abandonment of portion of the unopened alley between and parallel to Hamilton Street and Fraser Street in the King City subdivision, St. Simon's Island. The property is behind 111 Hamilton Street and is adjacent to Lot 100. Shelley Renner and James Renner, applicants. Mr. Andrews.
Commissioner, one minute while we get the item up. This is a request for abandonment. King City subdivision is to the west of the Pier Village area. The request for abandonment is an unopened portion of alley, several blocks west of the pier. Closer view of it. The original subdivision of King City had alleyways between all the parcels. In this block, this is the remaining portion of that alley. This is a picture of the alleyway. This is the rear of the house that sits on it. It's got a large oak tree in it and some bush and other vegetated growth. The picture was standing about here, looking this way. This is the lot, single lot in King City. It's requesting the abandonment. General information about the request, the alley, we don't have records of it being open for use. It currently isn't open for use. With the balance of the alley having already been abandoned, there's no way for the public to get to it currently. Haven't received any requests to retain any rights in the alleyway. And alternatives, with a recommended motion to approve it.
Commissioners, questions for staff? This is a public hearing item. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application for abandonment may come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith. I live at 61 Maxwell Avenue on the island. And I rose because I see no one else coming to speak on this matter. I recommend you abandon this tiny insignificant portion. I have spoken so many times against the abandonment of things that are actually of use and are accessible to the public. And I'd like to remind you again, I've spoken about this before, that there is de facto abandonment of property, of public property, of county property here in Glen County, and I would be happy to take any member of the commission for a tour of a few selected examples of how public property has been abandoned by the county. If you really want to abandon something, I recommend you abandon the mission statement to make Glen County the premier place to live and work in the southeastern United States, and work on continuing to make it a decent, safe place to live and work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Motion to approve the application of banning the portion of the unopened alley between the parallel to Hamilton Street and Fraser Street in King City subdivision, St. Simon's Island, Georgia.
Have a motion. Have a motion and a second, any discussion. All those in favor of the abandonment motion signify by raising your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is unanimous. Also a public hearing item, land use. ZV 3412-2807 Canary Drive, consider an appeal of the Board of Appeals' decision to deny variance from Section 701.5 of the Glen County zoning ordinance to allow encroachments into the required rear and side yard setbacks. The property's zoned R6, one-family residential, parcel ID 03-07830. Gerald and Donna Steves, applicants and owners.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. This is item ZV 3412. This property is located at 2807 Canary Drive. This is appealing the zoning Board of Appeals' denial of a variance request. The original request was to allow a 6.91-foot encroachment into the west side yard setback, to allow a 4.9-foot encroachment into the north rear yard setback, and to allow a 1.8-foot encroachment into the east side yard setback. The applicant's requesting to rebuild his workshop storage area on the same slab as it existed. There was storm damage he received during the hurricane. To not have to move the building that is in violation, and to have the $250 fee to apply for variance imposed waived. Some background on this property, the portion of the building that's used was damaged during Hurricane Matthew. Before a building permit can be issued, the property must be brought into compliance with our zoning ordinance. The county has no record of any permit for application for any of the work done on this property. Here are some photographs. This is the mother-in-law suite, side yard encroachment, rear yard encroachment, and the east side yard encroachment. This is a picture of the lot with the circles on what is encroaching into the zoning setbacks. The main house, which was constructed in 1962, was built prior to the zoning ordinance being established. However, since the zoning ordinance has been in effect, this house has been expanded and modified. Currently, a portion of the house, which was constructed between 2010 and 2011, encroaches into the west side setback, leaving a little over one inch between the house and the property line. The previous owners did install a concrete garage that encroached on the front and side setbacks. The applicant converted and expanded that concrete garage into a three-bedroom, two-bathroom mother-in-law suite. On the interior side of that building, he also constructed his workshop. That building encroaches 4.9 feet into the rear yard setback and encroaches 1.8 feet into the right east side yard setback. Building official Ellis Carter has reported that he cannot certify the building that's safe for habitation. For it to be issued a certificate of occupancy, it would need approval from either a registered engineer or architect, and also that all the work that's been done on the property since the storm has been at the risk of the applicant. He has been doing improvements without a permit. We contacted environmental health on the property. They did go perform an inspection. The last records they showed were for a repair done in 2003 when the pool was added and the drain field moved. At that time, the second structure was a carport for a camper, not requiring hookup to the septic tank. Now, the second structure has been turned into a rental mother-in-law suite, and the owner said that he tied it into the existing system. So there are now two three-bedroom structures on a system designed for one three-bedroom structure. No one's currently occupying the second house, so at this time, they can't determine if that structure's adequate to serve both structures. Environmental health would not have approved this had it gone through the permitting process. At this point, the trigger for them to bring them into code is for the septic tank to actually fail. The guest cottage, we do have zoning ordinance requirements concerning those. The electrical utilities must be on a single meter with the main house. It must have the same water meter. No kitchen may be included in the guest house, specifically a stove or 220-volt connection. The guest house may not be rented out separately from the principal dwelling. The entire site must be rented as a single entity. Now, this picture was taken in February 6. You have a letter from the applicant in your packet that explains that he has done some modification to this since the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, but this was the mother-in-law suite. In reviewing this for variance, there are no extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property. There's no condition that's peculiar to the subject piece of property. The proposed use is permitted. A residence is permitted, as is a guest cottage and pool. However, neither the pool nor the mother-in-law suite has been permitted. Since no permits have been issued for either these accessory uses, the building and zoning departments consider them illegal structures. Some of the circumstances that exist today are the result of the applicant, who is the current property owner, the conversion of the garage into a mother-in-law suite, enlarging the primary home without a permit into the setbacks, and adding on the workshop. It is staff's opinion that the proposed request has potential to cause substantial detriment to the public good or impair the purpose and intent of this ordinance. The intent of the variance process is to assist people who have non-conforming lots through little to no fault of their own. The applicant has performed some major work on his property without a permit several times. If he had come in at any time to get a permit for the construction he was doing, this situation could have been avoided. Staff recommends denial of the appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals' decision. If it's decided to approve the variance, staff recommends that the approval is conditioned on a requirement that the entire property connect to public sewer within six months to avoid potential failure of the septic system. And I'm sorry, that should say the BOA. At the regular February 9 meeting, the Board of Appeals voted to deny all requests for a variance from Section 701.5 of the Glen County zoning ordinance. In considering their decision, the applicant admitted that he knew he needed a building permit because he is a licensed builder. He also stated that he's had at least two different people rent the mother-in-law suite in the past separately, but that he was no longer interested in renting that building out. And this is the full list of variance requested, and again, the Board of Appeals denied their variance request. County staff is available to answer questions. Our building official is here, and the applicant is present tonight.
Questions for staff?
Did you state that, refresh me if I'm wrong, that two, there's three different encroachments. Two were already there before this gentleman bought the property, correct? Is that what you said?
The pool... The pool encroached and the carport encroached. The owner in 2010 or '11 did an addition to the home that became the third encroachment, and then the workshop encroaches. So two existed and two are current.
So he did two, but there were two there prior to?
Yes, sir.
People should have bought a bigger lot.
You did say that he was a licensed contractor?
The applicant is here to address that, and that is what he had a discussion with the zoning board of appeals, that he is a contractor and has built homes in communities.
Now, if you know anything about their licensing process, wouldn't they understand about encroachment?
Encroachment in that building structures requires permitting typically is understood by people who are contractors.
Thank you.
Pam?
Yes, sir.
You said before he purchased the property, there were already two encroachments?
Yes, sir.
And is that telling us that apparently when he bought the property, there was no surveys done or anything to indicate that there was two encroachments already there? I mean, is that?
More than likely. So the house...
We've had this happen before over on the island, and where people bought a piece of property with a house sitting on it and a dock and all this stuff, and there were existing encroachments. And I mean, the bottom line was the person that they bought it from did just, what we're doing here, is just moved in and started adding on. And when you got down to it, they bought it, one person bought it from another person. There was no bank involved and all this kind of stuff, therefore, you didn't have the follow-ups with the mortgage companies and blah, blah, blah. And there was just all kinds of stuff going wrong over there, and it all came back to when they sold the property between two individuals. So that's what I'm saying. If it had gone through a mortgage company or something like that, or some financing institution, they should have required surveys. So that tells me apparently something was broken down right there.
Yes, sir. And the house existed before the zoning ordinance, and when that was adopted, it has a code section that says anything that was not in compliance at that time with those regulations that were adopted was considered a legal non-conforming use. However, it attached conditions such that that illegal non-conforming use, that legal non-conforming use cannot be expanded or modified without certain permissions. And so that's what has occurred over the years.
Okay, so the variance he's asking for, there's three of them here on the report, one, two, and three. Which of those three, two were already done when he bought the property? Which ones are they?
The pool encroachment and the carport encroachment. And I'll tell you which sides of the property that's on.
Which, item one, item two, item three? It doesn't say which. Oh, okay, there it is.
So the east side setback is the garage. At the time, it was a garage that violated the setback. And then the pool setback, which is the other side yard. It says main house, but the pool is in the setback. That's what was existing at the time.
But those items were done prior to the zoning changes?
The pool was not. The house was.
Okay, so why does he need a variance for something that was legal when it was done? I'm confused.
We go ahead and try to bring the entire property into compliance, and if those existing things were the only things that were in violation, we would recommend approving that variance because it was the condition the property was in when he purchased it. And so, for example, with the pool, we don't recommend any action on that because the pool existed, and that was the condition he got it in. However, the additions he has made since he's owned the property are what necessitated our recommendation of denial.
Pam, item one is clear to me. He bought the house, and after he bought the house, he added onto the west side of the house, that small area that comes out, and it encroached into the setback 6.91 feet, Item two, that was, that encroachment was there when he bought the house, item two, right?
The encroachment of a garage within the setbacks were, yes. He then converted that into a mother-in-law suite.
Okay, okay, that's a garage. Okay, but that was, that was already, that footprint, that encroachment was there when he bought it?
Correct.
It was there.
Correct.
It may have turned, it was a garage or something.
Yes, sir.
He turned into a mother-in-law suite. Item three, same thing?
Item three is the workshop he attached to the mother-in-law suite once that had been converted from the garage.
But, but it was on that same footprint?
No, sir. It was additional footprint.
Okay, so he added on it like he did his house on the west side, is what he did. Well, I say same fashion.
Well, and you can absolutely speak to the applicant. I think he has some more detail on that.
Well, as far as, I want to see if we're on the same page first. Item four says rebuild his workshop, rebuild his workshop storage area on the same slab. Now, is he really wanting to rebuild that, or did he just have some roof damage, and he's wanting to repair the roof, and he needs a permit to repair it? The structure's still there, right? The structure, I mean, it's not just a slab.
Correct. It's not just a slab.
There's a structure on that slab.
Yes, it did require some addition, some repair in addition to the roof. But yes, it did not completely tear down that structure.
The main thing was the tree fell on the roof.
Yes, sir.
It caused some other damage.
Yes, sir.
But he needs to repair that roof and whatever other subsequent damage. So there's a building there that was there when he bought the house. Yeah, he bought the house, and then he convert, he bought the house with the building on that slab, which was already encroaching. And I'm just, what I'm trying to get to is...
With the carport.
I have a hard time holding him responsible for encroachments that was made before he ever bought the property. And I'm trying to sort out, you know, he made the one on the west side of the house. You know, with, he went 6.91 feet to the west side. Sounds like he did, the pool he didn't do.
Correct.
The garage, the addition that we talked about, okay. On the east side?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, he did that. But, so it sounds like he did two encroachments, and he did work that he didn't have a permit Says he's a builder. I'd like to know if he built without a permit, so we don't know, or maybe we do know if any of that building was done to code.
And the building official can speak to that. That's why we had the slide in there, that the mother-in-law suite does not have a certificate of occupancy, and that he has, the building officials determined that in order for it to be considered, a registered engineer would have to go in and make an inspection and certify to us that it met the code.
And I know I can ask him to clarify this, but I think from reading his letter that he wants to do away with the mother-in-law suite. He wants to convert that structure back into a workshop, garage, or whatever. He wants to take that back. So, but, but my biggest concern is anything there that's not up to code, if we decide we're going to let him leave them standing, they need to be brought up to code. If he's a builder, he can do that. And what was the encroachments that he's done since he's been there? I just have a hard time holding, I mean, if, you know, if he bought something that had structures, a swimming pool that encroached into the setbacks, and the previous owner didn't come to the county, the county didn't detect it, the neighbors didn't rat on them, I just have a hard time holding him responsible for that. So, but anyhow, Mr. Chairman?
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I might ask one. So there's been a lot of discussion about setbacks in north side, southeast, west. I've kind of lost focus on the safety issue. What is your opinion about the safety and the ability to, of this structure to be inhabited without significant consequence? Do you feel comfortable that it's really all about encroachments and setbacks? Is it also all about safety of the structure that has been built?
It is about safety. So all the alterations that have been done to the site, we have no record of any permit being issued for any of that. And so that goes back to needing an engineer's report to show that it does meet code to be a safe structure. This was originally scheduled for the January Board of Zoning Appeals, and I requested that we defer it because we did not want to exacerbate if there was an unsafe situation. And so if this is approved, then we would work with the applicant to make sure we get the appropriate documentation to make sure that that is a structurally sound building before a certificate of occupancy is issued.
Got it. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, folks, I can't help but say, this is falling right into the middle of what we've tried to avoid here in Glen County. And as the saying goes, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than it is for permission. And that's getting wore out in Glen County. And this gentleman is a licensed contractor? He knows better. Okay? I'm a licensed insurance agent. I know better. Okay? I don't issue certificates to people that there's not an insurance policy standing behind it. And if this guy knew prior to putting his stuff up, he's wrong, and he should suffer the consequences. I just can't see us continuing to overlook these things in Glen County. And we've been on this roll for a long time, and it's all over the county. There's no way I can, I can go along with just a deliberate act here that was just done wrong up front, and the person doing it knew better. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application, come forward. Come to the podium, state your name, address, and phone number.
I'm Gerald Steves. Live at 2807 Canary. Bought the house about eight and a half years ago. The building that's in question was built 20 years ago with no regard to any property lines. And it was to my great surprise when, after the hurricane, I went, go into the county and ask for a building permit, and in less than a day, they tell me, we can't give you any permit because the property's already in violation. I said, how can that be? I haven't driven a nail yet. Well, they said, don't you know your building is 1.8 feet from the back property line? I says, well, I know it's closed, but I didn't know it was a violation there. So they said, oh, you first, you have to get the property surveyed. Okay, I did. I spent almost $900 for a survey. When I was building out at the lakes as general contractor, the surveys out there were less than $300 per lot. This little lot here in the city cost me almost $900 just to get that survey. So we did that. Some of the other things that were done on the property by myself were all done according to code. I've had twice people from the building department, including Mr. Ellis Carter himself, come to my house and see what was built and how it was built. One of his inspectors walked around and says, oh, I see you have the hurricane clips already up there on your rafters. I said, of course. Oh, and you have joist hangers in there too. Yes, the joist hangers are in place. And he says, well, that's not a flimsy roof. You put, your rafters are on 16-inch centers, not two-foot centers. I said, yes, 16-inch centers, and they're two-by-eights, yes. And the decking on that is not little flimsy half-inch, it is five-eighths, yes. So, he said, well, that's pretty stout. I said, yes, it is. So, my built, the houses I built out at the lakes were the most expensive ones in that subdivision, and they're the ones that sold. I have other friends who are builders at the time. They're probably just still sitting out there, unsold. The properties are in use, but they had to rent them out to get the debt service to cover their problem at the bank. But I didn't have that problem. None of my buildings or houses were unsold, so I didn't have that on my back. I wrote a letter to this committee, I guess you have it in hand, stating that I, we, wife, I am no longer going to have a mother-in-law suite there. Ever since this storm, we've been gradually converting it into just back to be a storage area and a workshop, just on the same slab and the same footprint that I bought the property on nine, eight or nine years ago. So, and they were concerned about, well, you have appliances in there. All the appliances are gone. They're gone. They went to the junkyard. They've been hauled off. Some were given, I gave them to some people. But anyway, there's no appliances there anymore. Not even microwave is in there anymore. It's true, there's bathrooms in there. I'd be willing to remove all the fixtures from one of the bathrooms, and I do a lot of work in the workshop. I build a lot of different products for veterans association, for amputees associations, coming back veterans that have got hurt. I have a friend who takes some of my stuff, like birdhouses, to them. He'll buy a dozen at a time, take them off to his friends in Valdosta, another one's in Savannah. So I don't charge him much for these. Then I have another person who gets my birdhouses, and they go to, to provide airfare.
Mr. Steves, if you could keep this relative to your property?
I'm sorry. Anyway, I really just want a building permit. And there's, the stove was on 220. Like I said, I'd be willing to remove the other, the fixtures in this, in the one bathroom, but I, since my prostate cancer, I have to have pretty close access to a bathroom. So that's why I like the other bathroom left intact. This area, this, I've never been in a legal proceeding like this before. Looks very much like a church. Here's the choir up here.
It's about as civil.
I'll hear your voices later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steves.
Ellis, could you come up here a minute, please? In reference to what he was saying, why were you inspecting the property, or why were you out there if there were no building permits or anything on the house?
It was part of the storm damage, and as alluded to earlier, there was a tree that fell on the property on that work shed. And I did not go out there. I sent an inspector because I heard the word electricity being used. So we went out, made sure that everything was safed off. We contacted the electrical company, told them to not come back on the project until a permit was in hand. And I have been out there, I was out there yesterday, and I walked through the property.
Okay, thank you. Are there two electrical services there? One to the mother-in-law suite and one to the main house?
No, sir. It all appears to be tied into one.
One electrical service.
Is the electrical service that's provided both, for both buildings now, if there had been a building permit, were they in compliance? Or is that, you're not?
That would be hard to say because everything's been covered up. That would be hard to say because everything's been covered up. So, there's just no way to verify that it actually meets code. And I'm not doubting that it does. I'm just saying there's just no way.
You say it's been covered up. Can it be uncovered?
Yes, sir. You could. That would mean removing all the drywall, though, off of the, and there's other ways. We could use testing equipment or have someone use testing equipment just to make sure of, you know, the integrity of the electrical system. That is our primary concern, is the electrical.
Any other questions for?
Why wouldn't a septic tank be a primary concern?
The septic, certainly following up under the state guidelines, and what has happened here is that is three-bedroom, two-bath, three-bedroom, two-bath on one septic system. And that is, you cannot do that. It's not a matter, if it will fail, it's just when will it fail? It cannot support two families on one tank. So, that would be the main issue there. And certainly, I'm out of my comfort zone speaking about septic tanks, but I do know enough about them to suggest that that is not meeting state law.
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
So, what's the fix?
The fix would be, is what was recommended, is one would need to be to abandon all the lines that go to that septic system. We have done this in the past, and it's pretty extreme, but we've actually placed concrete down those lines so that they could not use that. Or two, the simple fix would be hook on to public. If, of course, a.
Does he have reasonable access to public sewer?
I believe so.
I don't think there's any question about it, and that's where he needs to go.
Any, any other questions for staff? Mr. Carter? All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner.
Thank you. To speak in favor of the appeal. Anyone like to speak in opposition to the appeal? Seeing on commissioners.
Hey, I have a quick question. Sir, did you not say that you turned out the mother-in-law suite? It's gone?
Gone.
Okay. So, then you basically have an extra toilet hooked up to your septic tank? With all due respect, I don't think you're going to be running back and forth real quick using all of them at once. So, I don't see where having an extra toilet on a septic tank on his home puts his, or the public's safety at risk here. I do understand if you had a mother-in-law suite where you have two or three people or a couple of people living there, where that might be considered too much, but under the state guidelines. But it sounds to me like what we're talking about is you'd like a toilet facility in your If we can verify by oming out the wires and checking the grounds that the electrical he's got, you've got is good, I don't see where it's a real big safety issue. The building, you want to fix the roof, right? I would think not having a roof on that building is probably more of a safety hazard than putting a roof on it, especially if it's done to code. And if you're willing to get a permit and do it to code, I don't have a problem. It's annoying when people don't get the permits or do what they're supposed to do, but I'm not for having to start, have to rip down buildings and structures and hook up the water and sewer because some mistakes were made. That's, but thank you.
Anything, anybody got anything else?
I guess I need to be clear about the encroachments presently. If he's saying he's torn down some things, do you still have those? I'm talking about the encroachments that he did after the new requirements.
Sir, I don't, would you please repeat your question?
I'm trying to understand. He's saying he's torn down something, the mother-in-law suite?
During the discussion at the Zoning Board of Appeals, they discussed the situation, and he said that he no longer had use for the mother-in-law suite. And so, they had suggested that he could potentially convert that just into a workshop, and that would eliminate some of the issues with that mother-in-law cottage. And so, on his own, since that meeting, that's where he removed the stove and the appliances from the kitchen. In his letter to you, he says he's willing to remove one bathroom because it currently has two. So, that, that was not any direction from us. It was just in conversation, and that's, he said that he appreciated that idea of just making it a larger workshop area.
So, if he, I guess I'm trying to figure out how they allow him to get back to where he needs to be. What is, what is it that he needs to do?
If the setback, if the setback encroachments are approved, then he would come in through the building permit process, get the certification he needs that the existing electrical plumbing, all the, all the systems in place now meet code, would remove that bathroom to make it where it no longer was able to be used as a mother-in-law suite, and then it could be used as a workshop.
And he'd be able to get a building permit?
Yes, sir. If you all approved all these encroachments, we would work with him to get that permit and then come into compliance so that he could get a certificate of occupancy for that structure being used as a workshop.
The encroachments that were done at the time when he should have known better, how long ago was that? You know?
I think 2010 and 2011. And again, some of those dates, we're working with the applicant because we have no permits pulled for any of that.
So, has he given an explanation of why he just built without?
I, you're, what he said at the Zoning Board of Appeals was he had spoken to his neighbor about their, if they had any concern about the work that he was proposing, and that he went ahead and did the work. And there are letters in your packet from his neighbor that didn't have a concern.
I understand where Commissioner Stanbauer's coming from as far as, but the thing that gives me real heartburn is this gentleman built houses. He built the lake subdivision. He knew what the requirements were for building permits, et cetera, et cetera, in Glen County. And he just saw fit to just bypass the system and just do it on his own. That's a statement. I'm not asking you to respond to it. That's just.
All right. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to approve the request for the variations that's set forth with the stipulations that staff discussed in terms of getting certification and verification that the electrical and everything is safe, the buildings are structurally sound, and bring those structures into compliance in terms of the electric and structural so that the gentleman can go ahead and proceed and put a roof on.
We have a motion to approve the encroachments.
Second.
How about, let me just ask this question. Does that include number five up there?
Okay, the motion, the motion does not include refunding the $250 fee.
Commissioners, does that, there's a.
We have a motion and a second.
Commissioners, is there a recommendation in by staff, if you were to approve it, that it must, must, excuse me, must.
Can somebody put it up?
Must, I guess, connect to public water and sewer within six months. Is that part of the motion? No? Okay.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any further discussion? And then you don't have the motion to put up there. Everyone understand the motion?
No.
JR, would you repeat your motion?
To allow for the variations requested under items one, two, and three, to rebuild the workshop storage area, not to remove the buildings that are in violation, not to refund the imposed $250 fee, and not to have to hook up to joint water and sewer as part, as condition of this waiver, and that the gentleman will get certifications from a licensed contractor that his electric is good and safe and that the structures are sound.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand? That was, that was three. All those opposed? Four? Okay, the motion is denied. The appeal is denied.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve all items on consent agenda, general business, with the exception of any items any commissioner so wishes to pull.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull items, or excuse me, I'd like to defer item seven till the 16th of March Board of Commissioners meeting.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items with the exception of item seven. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous. All right, item seven is deferred till our next meeting. Do I get a motion to defer item seven?
I make a motion to defer item seven to the March 16th meeting.
Have a motion to defer item seven to the March 16th meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right, general business. Consider adoption of the Glen County Strategic Plan 2017 through 2020. Dr. Hippen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're not headed to Edo Miller anytime soon, are you? Okay, good. Let's hang in there. So, very quickly, this might be maybe, hopefully, the easiest thing you have on your agenda tonight. Thanks to all your hard work over the last few months, I think we have a strategic plan, hopefully, for your adoption, which outlines a vision, mission, core beliefs for the county, and six strategic goals. Let me just take a moment to address the points that Jim raised and appreciate the positive feedback from some folks in the community. This is a first step for you guys, and it's a big step. And it's a very important step for your staff as well. You are setting forth in this plan some significant strategic goals and some objectives and strategies for your organization to go forward and achieve some important things related to the safety of the community, planned and managed growth, which remains a hot button both on the mainland and on the island. You are also outlining how you intend to recruit, retain, and take care of your staff, how you provide services in a high-quality fashion for the residents that you serve across this county, and how you maintain fiscal responsibility. So, a lot of complex moving parts. The implementation plan is important, but that's not your job. You're the county commission. You're the policy body. What you are doing here is setting forth the policy and instructing your staff, your one staff, Mr. Hours and his staff, to set forth an implementation plan that will ebb and flow with the priorities that you set. And I think what your job is to do is to adhere to the strategic plan as much as possible and keep Mr. Hours and his team on task to do that. Mr. Foster is right. You want some key performance indicators that have comparative analysis. You probably don't want to look at every county in Georgia. You want to look at counties that look like us because we might only have a growth rate of actual residents of 1% as Mr. Bork talked about, but you've got all these other people coming in who aren't residents. So, there's a lot of complexity to a Glen County plan that is different from other plans in counties across Georgia, and that'll be part of the implementation. As for a timeline, a number of the agenda items that you set forward in this strategic plan do have timeframes very clearly, and some of them are prioritized as, as you have directed, that there will be surveys in a certain period, and certainly the comp plan rising up to be a major priority for focus, not just for this board and your staff, but also the community writ large. So, I think you have addressed much of that, and then your job, assuming you adopt it, is to hand it off to your staff and then keep them on task and reporting back to you on a regular basis. I don't know that we need to go through it. You guys have, we spent a good day together last Thursday, but I'm happy to answer any questions. What you have before you represents a final proposal. Mr. Hours, myself, and the, and the team have gone through it, and I think that it's a good first step. And again, with a strategic plan, it's iterative, so you're going to want to, you know, keep making sure that the task is there, but stay the course and bob and weave slightly if necessary, but hopefully not a whole lot. Any questions?
Dr. Hippen, let me just say how much I appreciate your willingness to share your incredible talent and, most of all, your time in facilitating a two-day retreat in six hours. It was, it really was, as Commissioner Murphy says, drinking out of a fire hose. But I think it was an incredibly productive time together, and we did, I think, walked out with a consensus that this strategic plan is critical, critical first step. And I think there's an important component in there that talks about being able to refine it as we go forward and, and, together. And again, I certainly appreciate Mr. Foster's comments as well, and hopefully, you know, we can integrate some of those things into, into this process. So, but again, I said it at the retreat, we are so blessed to have a lot, so many talented people in our community and none any more capable than our facilitator at our retreat. And so, I thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank all of you, and good luck.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Carter. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment. We, I think it was one of the most productive times that we've had together in a long time. And I'd also like to, you know, thank you for all the detail and everything that was put into that. The strategic plan is only as good as the people that are following it and running, the, running with the strategy that has been put down on paper. And I'd like to just say that I want to encourage my fellow commissioners to always understand, there's seven of us sitting up here, and all seven of us have got to work together to make that strategic plan work. One or two ain't going to get it. Three or four ain't going to get it. You got to have seven, and everybody's got to be pulling in the same direction. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well said, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Glen County Strategic Plan 2017, 2020.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you very much, unanimous. And again, thank you, again, Dr. Hippen. Consider authorizing staff to move forward with a, hold on, with a litter abatement initiative, Mr. Austin.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is, these are the initiatives that were presented to you. This is, these are the initiatives that were presented to you at the work session. I'm representing the litter initiative team. We'd like to move forward under the three E recommendations of education, elimination, and enforcement, and then we'd like to report back to you in June as to our progress under those initiatives. All these initiatives are at no cost. And of course, the most exciting part of this is the litter free beach initiative.
Yes, sir. Exactly. We're going to see how that works. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to move forward with the litter abatement initiative.
All right. We have a motion from the czar of litter, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of moving forward with the litter abatement initiative, signify by raising your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's unanimous. Consider amendment to the Glen County Clean Community Ordinance revising Sections 2-16-231 through 216-244. Ms. King.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to take a few moments to review the intents and, or the highlights of the new proposed litter ordinances. To begin with, just as a reminder, we, as a committee, researched through the nation and then honed in on state ordinances in communities that were similar to ours, and we incorporated best practices from Valdosta, Lowns County, and Athens Clark County, such as the wording and some of the ordinances that they included that we had, did not have in our ordinances. Also, the new proposed ordinances are written in an easy-to-understand, reader-friendly tone. Our hope is that any person in the public can flip through to the litter ordinances on a day that they want to have some exciting reading and understand exactly what is expected of them to help keep our community clean, green, and beautiful. Also, the proposed ordinances have expanded sections over what was currently existing, and one of the big things of the highlights are increased penalty amounts. We felt like this was very important to get the attention of folks as to increase the penalties or the fines. Something else that's a highlight is incorporated into the actual proposed litter ordinances are pertinent items from other county ordinances, with the goal that all things that pertain to litter are actually in the litter ordinance. So, for instance, unsecured loads were mentioned in a different ordinance, but we want folks, when they're talking about litter, to be able to go to one place and see all of the ordinances that pertain to that subject. The intent with this proposed ordinance is to mirror as closely as possible the proposed updated ordinances for the city of Brunswick, and they're about a month behind you all in this process. And so, the goal at the end of this entire endeavor is to have the city and the county litter ordinances mirror each other as closely as possible, so that whenever anyone is anywhere in our community and they litter, the ordinance is going to be the same across the board. Also, staff worked diligently with this. We've consulted with the legal department, and we have staff buy-in across all departments, which is very exciting. And finally, one of the most exciting things is that since this process is taking place under a coastal incentive grant through the Department of Natural Resources and the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, that this body of work, these proposed new ordinances, will be held up as best practices throughout the country to coastal communities from the Coastal Zone Management Program, and that's a very exciting and noteworthy component of this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Got a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment of the Glen County Clean Community Ordinance revising Section 2-16-231 through 216-244.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the Glen County Clean Community Ordinance revisions, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Number 12. Consider adoption of a resolution enacting a 45-day moratorium to bar the acceptance and/or receipt of applications for approval of site plans, preliminary plats, conditional use permits, special use permits, plan developments, and rezonings. Commissioner Murphy.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, this is my first opportunity to submit a resolution, so I hope you'll bear with me and support me, and if errors are made from a technical perspective, you correct me as needed. But I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the resolution enacting a 45-day moratorium to bar the acceptance and/or the receipt of applications for approved, for approval of site plans, preliminary plats, conditional use permits, special use permits, plan developments, and rezonings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
If I'd be permitted to open the discussion, and I ask for the, is that appropriate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And I do this because there's been some discussion about the anticipation of my making this resolution, and I've become aware of many misunderstandings. So, let me clear those up. The misconception that might be held by some, that this is trying to serve the same purpose as previous moratoriums of the not-too-distant past, that is, to achieve ordinance change. That is not the purpose of my resolution, but rather, my concerns pertain to the staffing office. There has been an extreme, extremely concerning degree of staff turnover and the planning staff that predated our present Director of Community Development, but nonetheless, we are scheduled to have three planning staff persons in that office, and the last two left seven and eight months ago respectively, and those positions have not been filled. In fact, the numbers of interviews for those positions has been close to zero. In addition, prior to my joining the board, I was at a work session where you agreed to Mr. Hours' suggestion that we actually needed a planning manager to deal with the volume of work, to manage the three planning staff positions, and you all agreed to allow him to post that position and to add that to the organizational chart under the Director of Community Development. And as you also know, we've had zero acceptances, one brief consideration of filling that on an interim basis, but basically, we have had, out of four positions in that office that deal with the issues that I brought up here tonight, which are site plans, preliminary plats, conditional use, et cetera, we've had one person staffing that office over the past many months. And what this has led to, in my observation, particularly on the island, the island planning commission situation, is multiple errors are being made, and I can't point to you exactly why those errors are being made. Some are seemingly minimal, such as during one of the discussions held on 21 February, Taylor House was referred to as a restaurant and not a, not a furniture showroom, as it is. The most egregious example pertains to the Sinclair tract, which was a preliminary plat of 128 acres, 245 lots, but in fact, 60 acres had been sold in November and placed in a conservation easement in December. And in fact, the day of that IPC meeting, I'd actually received a note from a concerned citizen that was aware of this, but because of our work session and other issues, I was unable to pass this information up the chain. But, but the point I'm making is, if a concerned citizen on their own was able to delve into the records and find this out and pass it on to me, how is it that our staff was not aware of this? And I think that's emblematic of the basic problem. I want to make it clear that this is not a, an attack on our present Director of Community Development. I've had multiple discussions with her. She has not had time to develop the necessarily, necessary staff that is required. So, the purpose of my proposed moratorium is to allow her to focus most of her energies, not all of her energies, and I'll go into that in one second, to focus on recruitment, retention of the properly trained and the properly experienced staff to fill in the positions. So, as I stated in my resolution, you all are aware that the moratorium calls for site plan and preliminary plats, rezonings, conditional use permits. I want to emphasize that that is not, it is not a moratorium dealing with building permits, expedited subdivisions, single-family residential permits, or land disturbance permits. So, this is not about me, Peter Murphy, trying to shut down all building, all development in Glen County. That is not what it's about. And in fact, if I could convince some of my colleagues up here to vote with me on this, I would even be willing to suggest maybe we should focus just on the islands and thereby cut the work of the staff in half, thereby still allow our new director to put the majority of her time into recruitment and retention, because I don't think you're going to find the right persons for this by simply sitting in front of a computer screen or sending emails back and forth. It's become apparent to me, if we've had these positions open for months on end, it's going to require a little bit of roadwork, a little networking, a little face-to-face contact. So, it's been suggested to me, sorry, Mr. Strickland, I apologize, Commissioner, I thought you're, I cut you off, I apologize, but the suggestion was made to me in the recent days that I, my motion will cause irreparable harm to the Glen County economy, just when it's coming back from the Great Reception, I'm sorry, just when it's coming back from the Great Recession. I, it has been suggested that if this moratorium is accepted, that somehow Glen County will be overlooked by builders and developers going forward. I think there's a bit of hyperbole in that reaction, but I, as I've said earlier, if that is a great concern, and we wanted to drill down in a more focused fashion to allow our director to have more work time to spend on recruitment for the positions that are required, I could see focusing this on just the planning of the, as it relates to the islands. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
I'd like to make a comment right behind that to numbers. Everybody likes numbers. He mentioned the Sinclair property tract, where we've got quite a bunch, quite a few discrepancies. Actually, no less than 12 discrepancies have been identified on the proposal that was made to the IPC last week, and those, those discrepancies are pretty, pretty defined. I don't think there's any question that, in my mind, if the person that was putting that together, in my mind, just wasn't paying attention or was just incompetent on what they were doing. But numbers, I got an email yesterday from an undisclosed person, I got a phone number, but saying that the IPC meeting had been canceled for March due to the fact that there were no, no plans or anything to look at, and that's just not, that's just not the story. I mean, it's because they don't have any that are in compliance to send to the IPC. Right now, effective numbers as of today, we have 2,294 permits that were permitted, that were permitted in 2016. That's where they come down to, well, that's just six, being 3,000 permits that went through our community development department. As printed in a newspaper article a while back, we were showing that there were some 180 average per month. Well, with the exact number, that's 191 per month, 2016. For 2017, from January 1st until yesterday, we have 428 in two months. And then, we have 214 pending applications for permits sitting on the desk right now, today. We're just not getting it done, and you're going to have to have some manpower, you're going to have to have some reorganization, and, and we've got to take this bull by the horns and go forward with it. I think the numbers speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I have a couple of questions. It's on. Can you hear me? Maybe I'll try to speak up. First of all, I'd like to ask Alan, since I don't see or hear. Who's responsible for recruitment?
Commissioner Booker, recruitment is initiated by Human Resources. Applications are submitted to them, but departments are involved as well. So, the...
So, are they involved once the applications come in, in the selection process, or if the department head or supervisor yourself set the criteria to HR, then they kind of eliminate the ones that they know don't meet that criteria, and then present the ones that do?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Once the applications are submitted to Human Resources, they screen all the applications to ensure that they meet the minimum qualifications for the position, and those applications that do are submitted to the department head.
So, beyond yourself and HR, how much involvement normally do department heads have in recruitment, not retention, or even the, you know, going through the application process, but do they, they go out and visit people, or how do, how do they get involved?
I really can't speak to each individual department. You know, hiring of employees is left to the department director. Again, Human Resources screens the applications, sends those to the department head. The department head selects from that group individuals to interview. You know, oftentimes, they'll have more than one interview, but it just really depends on each particular department and how they handle the process. I know for myself, when I was interested and actually made an offer to a planning manager, I did go to that community to observe that person, but that's just me. You know, some people may or may not choose to do that, and it really depends on the position. Not all positions warrant that type of extra effort, but some positions, I think, do. And I believe, you know, the planning manager does warrant that extra step.
Okay, fine, that clears that up, I think, for me, that, but the recruitment effort is led normally by HR.
Yes, sir.
With some involvement depending on the department head's time and maybe even ability to recruit.
Yes, but, but department heads can influence the recruitment effort with HR. For example, HR can, upon request, develop a professional brochure that's more than just the, the job position. It talks about our community, it talks about the position in more detail, some of the challenges of position that was done with the, with the planning manager position. And then, in some instances, like in what's before, tonight, the planner positions, Ms. Thompson is going to go out to some job fairs, and she's going to take a more active approach, but prior to now, she just hasn't had the time, you know, to do that. but prior to now, she just hasn't had the time, you know, to do that. But, you know, for example, in department directors that I work with HR and recruiting, then I provide them specific information. The planning manager, you know, we ask it to be advertised nationally. The American Planning Association, the Georgia Planning Association, and other networks to advertise those positions. So, it just really all depends on a particular position and the methodology that the department director uses for their recruitment.
So, if she didn't have the time before, how does she have it now, if we are short staff? Or is she just going to make the time?
Well, she's going to make the time, but she really had to sort of get some foundational things in place and sort of figure out what was what before she hit the road.
Then I guess my, that's fine, my next question is to Aaron. If, through, you know, we just, I guess Commissioner Coleman just talked about the number of applications that we've had. Going through that process right now, if there's, if we've had some errors, it sounds like from what Commissioner Murphy and Commissioner Coleman have outlined, have any of those things led to us being in litigation?
We are currently in litigation over certain issues pertaining to the processing of applications. Yes, sir. I don't know specifically, well, the one specifically I think Commissioner Murphy mentioned, we're not in litigation on those, but we are in litigation over issues pertaining to the processing of applications.
Was it, is it unusual items, or is it sort of par for the course, from your experience, the ones we're involved in now?
As far as the errors that are alleged to have occurred?
Right.
Commissioner, because we are in litigation on those items, I prefer not to discuss the specifics of those cases.
I guess what I'm getting at is if we have a new director, and she's, as Mr. Irsay said, she's getting herself together, getting her department together. And if short staff, although we're short staff, going through that process, the application process, will, in effect, if they're being thorough, which I'm sure they are now, and still, there may be some errors because everybody's human, that in itself will somewhat slow down the process. I mean, they won't be, she won't issue permits or approvals without things being thorough. And if you can't, you know, they can only process what they can process based on how much staff they have, correct? The last thing I guess I want to kind of comment on around this is that when we had the previous moratorium, we did end up with folk from the other side coming at us because of property rights, or whatever their foundation was. I mean, if they have a piece of property and they have a right to build on it, and they're going through the process legally, you know, without us saying, having this moratorium, but they still can, we can vote for the moratorium, but they can also take us to court, correct?
Correct. I mean, anyone can certainly file suit against the county. I'm comfortable with the legality of this proposed moratorium, if y'all were to adopt it. I think it's legal, and then the county is able to do it. This is a temporary 45-day moratorium that does not take away those rights, it just temporarily suspends the ability to submit an application to the county for review. At the end of that 45-day period, they're able to submit it. This does not, any pending applications that are complete, those would continue to go through the normal course of business. So those aren't affected if they're already in the system. If they're incomplete applications in the system, then they, those would be stopped by the moratorium, but the, I am comfortable with the legality of the draft moratorium before you.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question. Did I understand, Mr. Irsay, you said that the hiring process, excuse me, is that in Pam's hands now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I need to direct these questions to her then, I guess. We understand, we've got a planning manager position open and two planners.
Yes, sir.
That's, okay, that's our main concerns right now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you're at liberty to pick someone that you feel like, you know, per an application process and so forth, and you're at liberty to hire that person?
Yes, sir.
These people, okay. On our current pay scale, what is your feeling, and I'm not going to hold you to it, okay, what is your feeling, where do we stand? Are we competitive? I mean, I don't understand, is jobs of this caliber, you're talking, my last time I looked, these, all these people are making more than excess of $50,000 a year? Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then your planning manager's going to be making a little more than that?
Yes, sir. And just to provide some limited additional information, we have received applications for the planning manager position, and that was, as Mr. Irsay said, where HR helped with an enhanced recruitment brochure. The planner positions have not received as much information, and in talking about efforts, for example, the Georgia chapter of the American Planning Association holds their spring conference in April, and I'll be attending that to actually have a booth to let existing planners in Georgia know that Glenn County's here, and that we're a great place to work, and that we're looking for qualified people to join our team and help make our community a great place to be. So, we are making those efforts, and as I said, we do have applications for the planning manager. So, we are in the process at various stages on all of those openings.
Okay, so, with that said, where are we today? Do we have any planners that have applied for the jobs?
We've had, we've had applications for planning manager. We've had 24 applications that were submitted to the Human Resources Department by the deadline for that. I don't know the total that were submitted for the two open planner positions. I do know that that's where we're having the most challenge, having applicants coming forward.
The planners, the two planners?
The two planner positions, yes, sir. And the job fair Mr. Irsay spoke about, Georgia Tech has a master's planning program, and they're having a job fair at the beginning of April, and I'll be attending that also. It's not that we, we definitely want planners with experience with two positions, we do have some flexibility with the level of work experience versus, you know, graduate school that we can work with on our planners.
Are you at liberty to adjust those payrolls if necessary?
There is a pay scale, there's a minimum, a maximum, a median, and a typical hiring range. If there are unique circumstances to the candidate that I would like to recommend, I can work with HR and Mr. Irsay to have that adjusted as necessary.
Okay, so, between now and April, what are we going to do about trying to get those three positions filled? Or what are we doing to try to get those three positions filled? You said, you said you're going to the job fair, I mean, that's another 30 days from now. My question is, what are we doing today and until then to try to fill those positions? Have we got a program out there?
Well, we have for the planner positions. I did verify with the Human Resources Department, we are expanding our regional reach to the application to other coastal communities, for example, the South Carolina, the North Carolina, and the Florida chapter of the American Planning Association, and trying to do some direct outreach to other coastal communities for the planner positions.
So what you're saying is, it's out there for the people to see? If somebody was a planner looking for a job, he could go online, he'd see Glenn County there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we've got an open door out there already. Then this extra stuff about the job fairs and all that's going to be on top?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, and you say right now, though, from your perspective, our pay scales are in competitive market?
Yes, sir, they're competitive with local governments. I, of course, haven't looked at it side by side with all of our neighbors and our aspirational cities, but knowing that, knowing different qualifications and pay scales, those are competitive pay scales to get a professional planner and planning manager into those positions.
Just one last comment here, I think that all the commissioners sitting here need to have a open door from you, that, you know, you run across the folks that we feel like, or you feel like is going to be a A++ person for Glenn County, and we can't get right on the payroll, that's a red flag right there. Yeah, I think that needs all alert to everybody that needs to know, and let's get that fixed. I mean, I don't see any reason for us to delay this another second. We need to hop on with all fours and move forward.
Yes, sir, and thank you for that support. And we definitely want to fill them as soon as we can with qualified, thoroughly vetted applicants. So we definitely want to make sure we're doing quality hires so that when we train and retain those people, we've got additional good resources on our staff.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of other comments. I think this is a very, very serious issue, particularly with the errors being made on the applications that are being allowed to go forward, Mr. Chairman. And as was debated two weeks ago by Commissioner Stanbon, myself, it's very apparent that once the Island Planning Commission, or the Mainland Planning Commission makes a decision, it's by far the greater feeling of this Board of Commissioners that that's it. We can't ask them, go back and take another look at it, or we think you may have made an error, and that's it. So this is a very serious issue, to not allow these flawed applications to get through the department up to the planning commission level, and then somehow find their way to approval when they're in error. Number two, I would submit that no business would operate like this and expect that errors would not be made. And if you'll let me indulge in a little bit of hyperbole, as was done with me, when it was claimed that I would cause irreparable harm to this economy that's coming back from the Great Recession, let me look back to where I was, and you all were coming to my operating room to get an aortic valve replaced, and my number one scrub nurse, St. Mary, was gone, and the perfusionist didn't happen to show up, but I said, I got somebody that I think can do both jobs, and I'll just shuttle them back and forth between the two. I think you guys would probably take the day off. And three, you know, there's been some criticism. By and large, I've gotten, and I know you all have been shared on these emails, 80 to 100 emails in support of my proposal. Now, there has been some criticism, but in that criticism, I've seen very little to suggest, short of this moratorium, what else is a better idea to prevent what's happening now and to deal with what has to be an obvious work, body, and personnel shortage in a critical department in our county government.
I would have another question to Mr. Irsay. I agree with what Commissioner Murphy just said, that it is critical, I think. So, and he has presented a possible solution or attempt to deal with the issue. Is there any other thought? I mean, did we think about maybe bringing on some more consultants temporarily? Or setting up a different kind of approval process that reduce errors? Mr. Irsay or Pam? How are we dealing with the errors? I guess that seems to be the major issue.
Commissioner Booker, since I'm not in that office every day, it's probably best for Ms. Thompson to speak to that.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. We are working on our internal processes to make sure that we are thoroughly reviewing projects as they come in to meet our current regulations. We've created, we're working to create some checklists that correspond to our regulations that we didn't currently have in place, so that we have a consistent set of guidelines to go by when each individual discipline is doing their review. A lot of these projects are shepherded through the process, through the planning department, but involve a lot of other disciplines that need to look at their particular area of expertise. So we're making sure that everyone has the tools to do their job, we have checklists in place to make sure that every regulation, and we're developing those and implementing those as we move forward.
So, if this is passed, will it give you an opportunity to ensure or reduce the previous errors or future errors greatly? I mean, it sounds like you're well on the way to doing that.
I come to work every day with the goal to work on improving our process, improving every review, and making sure that we're providing accurate information to citizens, to applicants, whether they're building a home or building a commercial building, and to both planning commissions and to this board, so that they can determine, have information, make the decisions that face this community. We definitely still have some of those challenges, and we're working through them, and we're working forward. So, that's my goal every day when I come to work.
Ms. Thompson, let me just say a word here, I think one of the, one of the solutions might be just slow down the process. I get emails from Ms. Thompson at 10:30 at night. We don't have to have an Island Planning Commission meeting every month. We don't have to have a Mainland Planning Commission meeting every month. I think that the process can be slowed down to accommodate whatever staff you've got to make it happen like you want it to happen. And I couldn't agree more with Commissioner Murphy, that some of your time needs to be on the road. I believe sitting across the desk from you, talking to a potential planner, I think they would like to come to work for you. And I think it's important that we get face-to-face with them. And if, you know, and I think this commission can come up with the resources to get you where you need to be, if it's Michigan, or if it's California, or it's Lutawissee. I think that's an important part of this. I think it's more important for you to be out there trying to fill your staff than it is reviewing a preliminary plat approval, that it's not a life-and-death situation in the next 30 days. And so, I just think that part of this can be slowing the process down, and you're working a 40-hour week instead of a 70-hour week. So, that's been said.
Pam, I've always had a good experience speaking with you ever since you came on board, and I appreciate your coming. You and I had a little discussion yesterday, and recognizing that with the under-strength department, you would not be able to turn out as many application requests as you would with a, you know, full-strength department. I think everybody recognizes that, there's no argument there. You will not be able to turn out, you know, people that are coming through the door with applications, with requests in your department. What you can forward on to the planning commission is going to be a reduced number for the time being. But my question to you was, when you process an application and send it to the planning commission, will it be a quality product or not going forward? We may not be sending as many as we'd like to, but will you be able to, with the staff you have, if you get one out the door, will it be a quality product going forward, or will it not be? So, you gave me an answer yesterday, and I just, for this audience here today, and the rest of the commissioners, because all the commissioners were not there yesterday when we spoke. when we spoke, what would you say to that?
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I committed to the Planning Commissions, I committed to you all and Mr. Irsay, that my goal was to make sure any application that went forward was thoroughly and completely reviewed. I make no excuses for any, anything that's happened prior to my time, my tenure. I take responsibility for what's coming forward. There were definitely some oversights in the projects presented last week, as Dr. Murphy pointed out, and I take ownership of that. We are moving forward and putting things in place such as planners visiting the site to make sure they see the site, see what's around it. And we are doing those internal quality control things. And I commit to you that every effort is made that I will not send forward an incomplete application.
Thank you, Pam.
Pam, I think, to echo some of the sentiments here, nobody's going to come in and do it in dingling dance all over your floor, because I get calls from people saying how slow the department's gotten. That's basically it. Take the time you guys need to get it done and get it done right. I know there's going to be mistakes. Nobody's perfect. We all make mistakes. But part of what we always push is public service, public service, get it done, get it done, try and accommodate the citizenry and the taxpayers as much as we can and get the stuff moved through. And my thing is, if you catch flak from them, don't pick up the phone, call me. They could yell at me all day long. I'm a big boy. I don't mind. So just take your time with this, and you are understaffed. You've got you, you've got a consultant, and you are right, there are a lot of different steps with Joy Water and Sewer that has to be shepherded different places. So it's not like you're sitting there working on one application constantly, but take your time. And don't worry about us coming down on you, or Mr. Irsay getting on you about backups or issues. That's not your fault. That's our fault.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your support.
One other thing, too, Pam, just for consideration, and Mr. Mumford and I was talking about this earlier, just to maybe look at taking five applications from the mainland and five from the island and working on those instead of, you know, the first come, first served type thing? And just like everybody said, just kind of slow down and just, if we do one and we do it right, then we're making progress.
Yes, sir.
Anybody?
So we, I'm just trying to get clear because I don't know if there's a concrete plan to the alternative of the moratorium that would help out the department. I understand that everybody's saying, slow it down. Well, basically, if it's going through a thorough process, it's going to be at the pace it can go with the short staff. That's what I meant when I first was asking those questions. But I don't know if there's a set plan that is concrete, is just kind of giving them direction as an alternative to the moratorium. That's what I'm not clear on. I mean, maybe there is, but I don't see a that would help out.
We have hired a subcontractor that we are paying at the rate of $150 an hour to be in Glen County one day a week. If you calculate that out over a period of a year, that person is making a six-digit figure on her payroll. Now, and this person doesn't even live here, and some of you heard her correct me in every source and every way she could in the last meeting, and quite frankly, I took offense to it. I think if we're going to get out and hire some people, we need to get out and hire some people and quit putting this thing off. And hiring temporary folks from out of town to come in here and make major decisions in Glen County is not what I think is the right thing to do, not when we can put forth our effort to get these people hired and get them in a position. It's hard for me to believe that those three positions that we're talking about right now, that there's not people all over this country standing in line to take one of those positions. I can't, I just can't believe that for the time that has gone by with these vacancies that a concentrated effort has been made. Quite frankly, if we had to turn to a consultant, that kind of tells me that an all-out effort has not been put in place, and that was the easy street out. So, you know, it's taxpayers' money you're spending here for somebody that could care two cents worth about Glen County. I think we need to concentrate our effort on getting people hired, and we need to get Pam out there on the streets and finding somebody that can fill these positions at the payrolls that we have to offer. Pam, just a quick question. How many folks in your department make $150 an hour, besides you? Huh? That's my concern. We keep paying these, we keep paying this consultant that could be gone tomorrow.
Well, I hope that's a bit of a hypothetical question. I don't know everyone's salary, and I'm not sure that that's my salary, so, but thank you.
But I mean, you know, that's what we've contracted with this woman, and now we've renewed that. We spent $25,000, and now we've committed to spend another 30 for somebody that drives in and out from Savannah. I mean, what's, I don't understand that. Why isn't that effort and that money being put forth to get some permanent employees? I don't know what we're going to gain out of that. So, I mean, I'm concerned about filling the spots, getting the personnel in place that can do the job, that we can feel confident is right. We don't have to question them. We don't have to back them up in the corner and say, you sure you did this right? I just feel like we need to quit kicking this can down the road and just face up to what we've got here and take care of the business.
Filling those, filling our current vacancies in the Planning Department with qualified staff is my priority, and any application moving forward or any permit being reviewed being done thoroughly and correctly, those are my dual top priorities right now in our department.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, if I could make just a closing remark on my presentation. Look, I think I've been reasonable and targeted in my request. To emphasize, it's not going to impact anybody that wants to put a porch on the back of their house or another bedroom on their house. It's not going to take away from an individual who's got a lot and wants to build their dream home. This is targeting the scope and the magnitude of the larger projects that take the greatest part of the effort of the staff to get it right, but also have the greatest impact on the future of our community. That's what I'm targeting here. And as a final remark, if I might, quote from Mark Twain, "Always do right. It will gratify some and astonish the rest." So I'm hoping we can astonish some people tonight, my fellow commissioners. Thank you. I appreciate your indulgence.
I think, how about day before yesterday, we had a motion and a second. Is there any other, any other discussion? It was a resolution. All those in favor, any other discussion? All those in favor of the resolution signify by raising your right hand. That would be the resolution for the 45-day moratorium. Signify by raising your right hand, those in favor. All those opposed? That's four to three. All right. The resolution is defeated. Counsel, we have executive session.
We do. Mr. Chairman, will a matter of pending litigation discuss, please?
Okay. Get a motion to adjourn and go into executive session.
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
You do.
Well done, Peter. Well, I appreciate it.
That's all right. Thank you. Thank you. Bye.